Welcome to the June 18th Planning Board Meeting, and I'd like to start by welcoming our newest Planning Board member, Eric Egan.
Well, Eric?
Yeah, yeah. Eric has a background in engineering, and we've had some conversations about the plans coming before us tonight, and I already know he's going to be great. So, good, good, good. All right, so let's start. We have minutes to review from May 7th. Has everyone had a chance to look at those? Yeah?
Yeah, those looked great.
Good. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, so next we have on the agenda, we have two special permits. One is the Lake and Pond Overlay District Permit for Three Lakeview Drive. The next after that is a driveway greater than 500 feet for Cherry, 17 Cherry Hill Road. After that, we have a Form A for one, Lori Wog Road, and then we are going to reconstitute the board. So we'll start with the, with a special permit.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
We have to reconstitute first?
No, it's for July 1st. We can do it, yeah. So we'll start with the special permit for Three Lakeview Drive, and because Eric is just joining the board, I'm just gonna sort of, in a preliminary way, special permits are public hearings, Eric, so we follow sort of a strict protocol. It's a legal proceeding, and I'll start by reading the procedures that we follow. Testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. Only one person will be permitted to speak at a time. All discussion will go through the chair in voices that are clearly audible to all meeting attendees. Civility is encouraged, and arguments between parties will not be permitted. So start for each person who, we're going to ask Brian Seider is here from Foresight with Daphne Lamb, and we're going to ask you to present and introduce yourselves, and then we will take questions from the board, one at a time.
My name's Brian Seider. I'm an engineering technician with Foresight Land Services, and Daphne's an internal of us this summer. And we are representing Betsy Aubrey and Steve Lichtenberg, they're owners of Three Lakeview Drive, on the end of Beechwood, east side of Stockridge Bowl. The property is on the lakefront with a house existing, one-story house. It's the closest dimension to the lakefront, it's about 51 feet, and the proposal is to place that house with a newer one, a little bigger. This is the proposed house shown. It's a little bigger footprint with the addition of a garage toward the driveway side away from the lake. And this has gone through the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. They approved an order of conditions two weeks ago. And again, we're not increasing any of the setbacks. There is, it's already non-conforming, and it's the road frontage dimension, but that won't change, and it's within 100 feet of the lake, under the LPOD. So that's why we're requesting a special permit to essentially replace the house with the newer structure, with no new non-conformances greater than existing. Along with that, we will be planting what is currently lawn along the lakefront with approximately over 600 square feet of native shrubs that provide stability to the lakefront as well as some habitat. There's an existing dock, which will be replaced with a newer one. We've gone through, we're going through the Chapter 91 process for that license, and stormwater calculations were done, and we had added drip edges to the new house that improves runoff from the roof. The house currently and existing will be up on piers, and the garage will be a frost wall, flat foundation. Welcome. Any questions you might have?
Okay, any questions to start?
For some reason, reviewing the plans before, I somehow thought that there was going to be an excavated basement, but there's not.
Only for the garage, the frost wall. The house is on piers.
Okay, that's maybe what I see. All right, thank you.
The, my, the plans I'm looking at are dated 5/23, May 23rd. Is that what we're doing here?
Yes.
Okay, this is still a preliminary plan?
Um.
I mean, that's what it indicates.
The one you have?
The one that I have is, yes, so.
I believe I submitted this plan here. It does not have the preliminary. It has the renter owner box.
Okay, how about anybody else here?
5/23.
So this is.
It is the correct.
I have 5/23.
Yep.
And it says proposed make plans that mature.
No, I'm looking at, it says date here, preliminary, but I assume that's what prelim means.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if there was a final plan coming out.
It's the, it was issued for a special permit, so it's, it is the final plan.
It is the final?
Yes.
Okay.
I think prelim is initial, and then the box above it is the date of the drawing that was issued, and the revisions box.
No, I, I, I understand. I get that, yes.
There was an amendment to this, because as a result of meeting with the.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm glad to introduce myself. I'm Lori Robbins, the attorney representing applicants, and I verify that the applicants did appear before the Conservation Commission. There was some concern about the proximity to the lake, so the applicants have chosen to move this property and the proposed structure back, so that I hope we can get the appropriate site plan and building plan. So I'm glad you're raising this issue, so that everybody's clear on what the applicants are doing. They're building further back from the lake as a result of the Conservation Commission concerns, and an order of conditions has been issued for that new application. So Brian, can you make sure that they've got in front of them your revised?
Yes, this revised 5/23 plan is with the building shifted, so the original application had an older plan, which I've presented, subsequent to that.
So the plan that you're submitting, is it the same as what we all have on our hands?
That looks like the plan.
So it's dated 5/23/24, is?
The drawn plan is the original. The one you have is the final that we're looking at with the house. Those two plans there. So again, this plan I'm presenting is the one that you have.
Right, so this is the plan. So we would want to know on this plan that this is the final plan?
Yes, dated 5/23.
Dated 4/9.
Okay, Brian, can you, can you tell us a little bit about the drip edge? Is that just stone gravel at the side of the, at the sides of the?
It's a stone drip edge. It's about two feet wide along the exterior of the house.
Running around the perimeter of the property?
Yes.
Right. And then what about the David Cameron, who has reviewed this for us, brought up, I had asked about it too at the site, is it the question of the patio? What are the plans for that? Is that part of your current calculations?
The patio area is part of the calculation. It's part of the coverage area. We had proposed to move it closer to the new porch. The idea is to have essentially at the stairs of the porch have some stepping stones, a small barbecue area, but it would be further from the lake and less.
Okay.
Likely smaller. There's also plantings and garden beds that are proposed.
All right, so you're not going closer to the lake with that? Okay, all right. Any other questions from the board?
I just wanted to say Historic Preservation Commission, I was mistaken. I thought we were meeting yesterday, but we're meeting next Monday, and I believe the aspect of.
Okay. Okay, so any, no more questions from the board? Okay. Is there anyone here who, any neighbors or butters, or anyone from the public who wishes to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone here who wishes to express concerns? Okay, all right. With that, then, if there are no more questions, this is a final call. As this is a legal proceeding, we now can close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and at that point, it's just the board that deliberates. There are no more questions or discussions or anything from the audience. It's just the board. So going, going, gone. If there's nothing more, then I make a motion that we close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing. Do I have a?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so now the board can deliberate and talk about this, and, you know, tell me, tell everybody what your thoughts are.
Well, compared to, I've, I've been on the ball for a long time. Compared to other constructions that I've seen, witnessed anyway, this seems fairly tame. That's my take on it. I mean, it's, you know, they're not, they're not building a, you know, digging a cellar hole. They're basically replacing, they're basically staying somewhat within the footprint, making it a little bit bigger. They're not going up to the sky, and they're not, and they're not removing a mountainside to create a driveway.
Right, I agree. The, it looks like the highest elevation is 28 feet, and I like that they're sort of multi-layers of roofs. It gives it, you know, I hope, more interest than just a big tall box that we tend to.
I was, I was pleased to see the elevations for the proposed house. I mean, it's, it's sort of in the spirit of the old house.
It is, yeah.
But I mean, it's, 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 I don't think it's going to offend anybody.
Right.
Is it on Town Water and Town Center?
It is. So they will be re, looking back up through Town Water and Town Center. The one thing that I will, I would recommend is that we ask the building inspector to keep an eye on the construction pace, because essentially what David has said to me is that this property was at one time wetlands. Okay, he said it was pretty squishy when he was there, and there were lots of wetlands plants in the lawn itself. So you can see the wetlands right to the, to the south of the property. And, you know, with all the money that the town is spending on dredging at the outlet, we want to make sure that we're not adding to that, so we want to make sure that there isn't stormwater runoff in soil flowing right back into that, into that outlet. So I'd recommend that it's, you know, that's, the building inspector can go on site at any time during construction. It doesn't have to be a condition, but I think it's something that, you know, we should ask him to keep an eye on. So, okay. Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I made the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. We have to do the findings. We can vote first. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the findings, I'll need to read those out loud. Before granting, well, you should have done that first. Before granting a special permit for any use requiring such permit under the provisions of this bylaw, the special permit granting authority shall find that the proposed use, A, is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this bylaw, and in harmony with its general intent and purpose, is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location, will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood, will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal facility to such an extent that the proposed use of any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to the hazards affecting public health, safety, or general welfare. Everybody agree? Okay, all right, so you have your vote, and you're all set. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so let's see. Just make sure that this is the final plan that I'm proposing. Thank you, okay.
It's saved.
Okay, so the next special permit, it's for a driveway greater than 500 feet at 17 Cherry Hill Road. The same procedures will be followed. Brian, would you like to?
Sure, so first thing I'll do is submit this plan to David Cameron. The only real difference is that it shows existing grading approximately. And this is also a revised plan, so the, it had been resubmitted with the driveway moved closer to the property line, which was a request of the Conservation Commission, and this was approved under an RDA by them at that same meeting. Which is, two lots combined are approximately 12 acres, frontage, very hill, ordering vegetated wetland that was delineated by Stockman Associates. And so the intent is to put the driveway as close to the property line as possible, which under the bylaw is five feet setback. We actually have, they're in, but again, to get out of the buffer zone of that wetland. We need it closer to the property. And the intent is to have that come in to get past the buffer zone of the wetland, so that you can access the upwind portion of the property. Right now, it's rather inaccessible. So along with that, as part of the RDA, we proposed the planting of 20 native trees along that corridor, because they'll snuff and hold out or have to be removed within the buffer zone there. And again, this is as conservative as possible, keeping the driveway out of the wetland area. The reason we're here for a special permit is because in order to pass that wetland and get out of the buffer zone, it necessitates a length beyond the 500-foot maximum that's allowed for a normal driveway. And so there's, there's an allowance, first of all, permit to extend the length of the driveway if necessitated by, in this case, conservation consideration. So we're proposing a 750-foot-long, 12-foot-wide gravel driveway. Utilities will be buried along it or under the, in order to beat that corridor down to 20 foot wide. We had it at 40, minimized it down to 20.
So where are the utilities? I don't see that on this.
So they're showing under the driveway, there's a dotted line that says, there's S and W, that's sewer and water, Town Utilities, and then the electric will be buried next to the driveway.
Oh, I see.
Otherwise, it would need to be, it needs to be concrete.
What's the E?
Electrical.
Okay.
This is electric, sewer and water.
Oh, okay.
And they're kind of showing here, as far as depth, the location is actually in the driveway. Just in terms of the depth, they, they'll be married. Proposing erosion controls along the whole corridor on the wetland side, and as you can, with the existing grades, the existing grade is sort of gradually sloping downhill away from the neighbor's lot line toward the buffer zone. And this is meant to, to be angled to sheet flow in much the same way, but proposing a culvert under the apron.
Is that shown on this plan?
It is, yeah. It should be the, there's a, the middle column on the right, proposed 12-inch culvert. This will be corrugated.
I see, oh, I see, I got it, okay, all right.
You have to take down a lot of trees to put the driveway in?
Not, not that many, actually. There's some of these, some of this is cleared already in the middle, so we did have some that just skirted the edge of this buffer zone, or only, the way we have it now, it's only 50 square feet of gravel in the actual 100-foot buffer zone of the wetland. But in order to make the corridor wide enough, I think it's, we went from 17 trees down to eight, at least in the buffer zone. There are some, a few others outside of jurisdictional areas. And then that's why we proposed the planting.
All three utilities are under the driveway?
The electric is alongside the driveway.
Is there any setback requirement for that?
I don't believe so. The reason being that if we put electric under the driveway, you have to increase it in concrete.
Yep.
So we could also put on the downside of the driveway also in the corridor, what I was proposing.
Think you want to put it on the uphill side of the slope.
And how does this affect the hydrant that's there?
The hydrant's proposed to be moved and discussion, actually, I didn't mention that. There's a, two, because it's longer, there's a turnaround proposed, or a bypass of 18-foot wide by 40 bypass, and that was run by the fire chief just to confirm it, and also in discussions was moving the fire hydrant slightly, and then few can lead on bringing a water line off of that same connection.
So Teresa and Jennifer have made me aware that there's, you don't yet have a curb cut, so we would need to, you know, this would need to be approved by our highway superintendent, Hugh Page, our police chief, and our fire chief.
Yeah, yeah, so as I said, the fire chief already approved it more or less, but after the special permit's granted, then we would go for a curb cut permit as well, which is separate. No actual curb there, but it's still required.
Any idea how far the fire hydrant would be moved?
It's, it's just on the edge of this apron, so it's five, 10 feet.
Okay.
It's not much.
Does the, does the curb cut, is that obtained before the special permit, or?
Up condition, yeah.
The only, the only concern that I had, it's not really a concern.
Yeah.
But there's no narrative. Now, you can look at the drawing, it's just a driveway, and you can figure out what it is that you're trying to do. You're trying to get to a portion of the property that's outside of the buffer zone, but there's, there's nothing that says anything about it, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it, kind of thing, which would probably be in the future, anyway, would probably be a good idea, I would think.
Yeah. I inherited this project.
I mean, normally, normally you do. Normally you guys do include an inherited.
Right.
I was surprised, too.
I think it depended on the complexity of the project, greatest use.
Yeah, it would be.
Definitely provided there.
It would be two sentences, basically, but, and the other thing would be that there's no legend on this as far as the wetland is, well, you know, what, what, what these.
There's no key.
There's, there's no, there's a legend for the silt rock and the actual composition of the driveway and stuff like that, but, and what you're planting. But nothing to say, yeah, this dash line means that, and these dots mean that, kind of thing, which would help. Once again, it's, it's just a driveway, I understand, but I think would be helpful.
Glad you say that. This was adopted from a compiled plan that was drawn, so you'll see the original one is hand-drawn, and then it got put into CAD and reproduced, I understand that it's missing.
We only just got this yesterday, so.
That current one?
Yeah. So ideally, we would get that sooner, but I understand you inherited this, so. All right, any other questions? Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to, in favor of this?
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Sure, come on.
When are questions allowed?
Why don't you come on up and introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Jess Toro. Where do I go? Out here? I'm the neighbor to the upslope, so. And so one, have it, well, we share some white pines, and if the driveway is that close and that wide, how do we protect the roots of the white pines? We had a white pine come down and wipe out our lawn and our placeet, and they're aging, and I'm just a little concerned about having a 12-foot gravel driveway, five feet from the, I mean, some of the trunks would go to where the gravel starts. How does that get mitigated? Is there, I mean, I don't know. It's just kind of a question of, am I going to lose my hinds?
So Jess, just to clarify, I'm sorry, I was looking at some papers here. So the white pines are on your property?
It's the property line.
They're on the property line?
They're half on the other side, too, but they're large and they're old, and we had, with the increased winter time storms we're having, then they've been breaking and, you know, causing a lot of damage. So I just don't want the roots to be impacted, to cause them to die, and then, I mean, I had a quote, it's like $20,000 or $30,000 to take these trees down. They're big and huge. So I just want to make sure they're protected, so it's not like a big future cost, especially if the driveway is on them, on the roots. So I don't know how that's mitigated. Do root prune, or?
I would typically prescribe, if they are near the roots, you would use something like a smaller machine or most hand-digging.
Right.
Versus going through, ripping the roots, you've cut them off.
Right, so the utilities will go even deeper, and then the driveway would be on grade, NFL.
Yes, I would, there's ways to prescribe where the roots are protected when you do that corridor. Again, the driveway is further from the property line.
Yes, no, no, and I'm generally supportive of, like, younger generations coming into Stockridge and having houses. I just kind of, I figured I'd voice my worry in case, like, five years, this is a big problem for us. So I just, I mean, the driveway is going to be on the bulk of the canopy of, or the root flare, root flare, not being very articulated.
Root, the root ball?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I mean, I assume if it's five feet off, you're almost hitting the trunk.
Can you work, let her know when construction starts, so that, is that something you could hook up?
Or, or condition.
Just like an arborist that would, then, kind of, not, you know, to minimize any debt to the white pines, because those are big.
Do you have anything on that? Yeah, I don't want to speak for.
Well, we will be hiring an arborist to come in to identify trees, trees to take down, or maybe siding a building lot, but I think, I mean, you have taken some of those trees down already, the gravel.
The ones that broke this winter and wiped out the.
And the root, and the roots could go both directions, so they're on the driveway, your drive, currently under your driveway right now.
I think that they are, I think they were, the driveway, they have come in before those were planted, so they existed before any impact on them. At least in the 25 years I've owned it, and I'm guessing the tree's about 40 years old, and that driveway's been there a long time. So I'm, I'm just looking at future impact, you know, kind of trying to protect those trees, because it was expensive this winter.
I think we could certainly prescribe, or even special condition, that, you know, care be taken around the roots of the larger pines, and we did, we were able to finagle it so that it's not.
Yeah, if the driveway was farther away, I would not worry. It's just as it gets closer, that's, I just, I just worried about a future expense of a bunch of trees.
Well, how, how much material?
Well, how, how much material are you removing to put in the gravel base?
I.
And how deep are you going?
It's, uh, six inches below. It would be six inches of gravel on top of about 12 inches. So you're going down a foot or two. Uh, but again, near the, if that does encroach on pine roots, you can certainly prescribe ways that they don't get, you know, cutting rather than ripping. So they're less damaged.
Yeah.
But I think many of them too will be below the driveway if it's that great.
Yeah, how deep are pine, pine roots?
Not very deep.
Not very deep. Mine, mine, in my yard, I have those huge pines and,
Yeah.
and they're right at the surface. In fact, I can't even mow over them because I'll scalp them.
I'm sorry, Brian?
Depends on the water tip.
Maybe a GoFundMe campaign to remove them.
To remove the trees?
You could, the wizard is saving them.
We want them. All right, so, um, we can talk about condition when we close the public hearing that will.
Wait, can I make comments too?
Yeah, we're not done. We're not done.
Very good, just before you're done.
Yep, um, okay, so we're, um, we're, we're looking for people who would like to speak in favor. Are you in that camper? Did you just want to make?
First you said favor or concerns, so I have concerns.
Okay, well, I'd like to, you know, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor before we go to concerns? No? Okay, all right, concerns, you're up Laura.
Jess, Jess expressed concerns. That's why I thought that was what you were doing. Okay. My, I don't even know if it's a concern, it's just a question because, um, it's more, it's just really the visual impact is what, I would, I'm up the driveway from Jess. And I guess that's my house showing there. So are those the trees that are gonna, those trees I'm assuming are all gonna stay? That's the question.
I'm just looking at where your house would be, uh.
Well, you see Jess's house and then the barn and at the top, there's another square.
Right, um, but I'd say as soon as you get past the buffer zone, which ends, um, I want to say about 200 feet past the barn, then the driveway's proposed to turn inward. So you wouldn't be clearing along the property line anymore past that point. Uh, we're just required to get past the buffer zone of the wetland that's, um, which is about 400 feet from the road, and then it would turn inward.
Okay, because there's that jagged line there. Are those the trees that are there now? You know, do you see the, on the, onto the top, I guess, looking at this, on the top of the driveway, there are trees there. You're not proposing to take any of those trees down, is that correct?
Would be.
There would.
Sorry, I couldn't hear, something went mute. Um, were you talking that whole time?
No.
No.
We're just trying to get the.
Just discussing where that area. That might be the other older plan.
This is the older plan?
No, this is the newer.
Okay. So she's concerned about this area, right? Laura's concerned about this area right here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just hoping, my, my hope is that I won't see the driveway. This is my hope and that I won't see the house. It's really, it's the visual, but that there's a, you know, I think that's your hope too, saying you won't see me either. But that's, that's my, that's my question. That's my concern. I don't, you know, and I'm, that's what I wanted just to get clarified.
The intent is to leave a, a visual corridor between, I guess it would be your property and the, the new house site.
Okay.
That's the intent, but we're limited to having to pass the, the buffer zone of the wetland.
Right, but I'm just saying, but right now, if the driveway curves, I understand the way the driveway curves. And I'm assuming there's a house site at the end of the driveway. That makes sense. But between my house and that are those trees that are along the property line going to stay?
That's just down here, that's not. I think that's the intent. It's not, there's no reason to necessarily remove them. Again, it'd be beneficial to them as well to leave.
Has the house been cited yet?
No, this is just.
Just a reminder, we're here for the driveway, so, um.
Yeah.
But the, the intent is to only remove the trees necessary to access the uplands.
What are, what are, I'm sorry, what are uplands?
Uh, it'd be anything, uh, sort of southwest of the, the wetland that's along the frontage of the, the parcel.
So are those little Xs there, trees that are going to be removed? Along the property line?
I'm not sure which plan you're looking at. Do you see?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the plan that was with the agenda.
What's the date on it, Laura?
Where would the date be?
Down in the.
Lower right.
Bottom right.
Four nineteen twenty-four.
I'm sorry?
Four nineteen twenty-four.
Oh, you know, the X.
Not on the current, it's kind of old.
I believe the axes are actually an existing fence that showed up on the, uh, survey. Um, that was before the driveway was shifted.
Right, but she's, she's on an older plan.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just looking at what was included with the agenda.
Right, but the, the trees there are being removed because of the driveway corridor.
So where those Xs are?
Not adjacent to your lot. But, uh, I don't.
Okay.
I don't know that it's relevant to the special permit.
Okay, um, any other, anyone else who wishes to express a concern or? Um, Jim, did you want to make a comment?
The only, I mean, I.
Can you, can you do me a favor and come up and introduce yourself? Thank you.
Right, stop, start saying change. Thing I, I, Jim Owenhyne, the owner of the property, 185 Little Road in Stockbridge, that's where we currently live. This property we're looking at possibly is an opportunity for my son to live, to build a house, because it's very challenging for young people to live in Bursch County. But I, you know, we rent to the wetlands, we met on there and I know the neighbors and I'm fragile. I don't like just to see a tree cut down. Do you ever negotiate and cheat things over so we don't impact? I mean, it's the, the conservation commission seems to be driving where this driveway goes. And I understand Jess's point with the roots of the trees. So if I came 10 feet over, I'd then be away from the roots of the trees while cutting out some, puts, we put dirt on top of them. Or then I'm into the wetlands, which is then a violation of the buffer zone of the wetland. So you really, it's in a tough spot.
Mm-hmm.
And like Patrick White said, we live in a wet town, so it's not easy, no matter where you go, not to run into these issues. But we have wetlands and then we have mature trees that could be impacted by the drive, what we're speculating, well, the driveway with the one available would impact the, the root system of these trees.
Mm-hmm.
I'd rather not be cutting down tons of trees either.
I would just say within that 20 foot wide corridor we have, you could do some curvature to avoid larger trees on the property. So there may be some potential there.
Right, because it's, that we got, you know, it seems like it's tough to need all these.
Concerned as we could.
Right, because once you get out of the, the buffer zone, if opens up like there, there's.
Mm-hmm, yeah. No, I mean, if there's some flexibility, this is a special permit. So, um, you know, there is some.
Cheating it, no one's going to come down and say you're.
You know, there is, you know, there is input that the board can have. So, you know, we do listen to people and we listen to their concerns. So if, you know, if there is some wiggle room, as Brian has indicated, um, I think that would be.
Yeah.
Within reason, within reason.
To make sure we're preserving as much as the, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that you're dealing with, you know, the buffer zone area. So within reason, if there's some room for it, that's great.
Thank you.
I would, I would, I would support that. I support, I'm happy to have a stock, a younger person coming and living here. I'm happy, I think that, you know, whatever can happen with the wiggle room with sort of a, uh, uh, dressing the, whether the visual and the environmental concerns of the abutters is fantastic. And those include the wetlands as well. So I think, I think we've expressed ourselves.
Okay, all right. So anyone else? Thank you, uh, thanks, Jim. All right, so if there are no other comments, again, um, we move to, um, close the evidentiary portion of the hearing. I make a motion that we close that. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so, you know, we've heard some concerns and we've heard from the owners. And what are your thoughts? This is a driveway. Keep in mind, this is a, is a special permit for a driveway.
I'm, well, I'm very impressed that the community comes together and talks about this nicely and comes to a, you know, to some kind of conclusion that may work for, for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
I'm very happy to see that. Um, and I'd be curious to see what you come up with in terms of that wiggle room.
Some of us were on the site visit. I mean, I didn't see anything, you know, jumping out. Besides, you know, that's not here on the plan, that is a concern.
It was pretty densely, uh, tense growth. It's pretty hard to see.
We couldn't get in there, but.
I wasn't going to venture in there in tick season. Um, Nancy, Gary?
Um, I think just, um, being aware of the, the roots and if they can, um.
There's some flexibility?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, and then, I mean, you only have so much flexibility because you have a delineated.
Mm-hmm, right.
Uh, uh, condition from the, um, conservation commission. So, but within all those factors, if you can, um, if you can do it, I would say that that would be the best practice to do it. Um, given that, you know, especially the white pines and stuff, they, they have a shallow root system.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, Nancy?
Well, I know with the roots, is there, maybe there's some way that they, you know, you could dig underneath them, because I've tried keeping things even around my crabapple trees. If you dig underneath them and then cover them over again with fill or whatever he's going to use to do the driveway.
I think we'll, we'll leave that to.
Save them. Yeah, that's not up to us.
Yeah, we'll leave that to people.
Whatever they could do to save it, I think would be the best. But other than that, I, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Eric?
Uh, there's, there's probably as much of a concern that the, the, uh, roots of white pines that are that large would compromise the driveway that it was put on top of it. Um, but.
Yeah, it goes both ways, yeah. Well.
You know, it's, it's a driveway, so.
Hmm.
And it's, uh, and like you say, conservation is really driving where, where it goes.
Mm-hmm.
And, and if you can, if you can, uh, you know, make some small adjustments in places that would, uh, that would help the situation, but not, you know, get into the, uh, buffer zone, then.
Yeah.
That would seem.
Okay. All right, so, um, we'll need to come up with a condition. This is a bit of a tricky one because, um, conditions are best when they're specific. So my suggestion is that, um, and again, the hearing, the public part of the hearing is closed. So Brian, you can sit down if you want. You have to do this as a board. Um, I would suggest that one thing we might do is, um, ask that when construction, before construction or when construction begins on the driveway, that, um, there's, you know, some communication in the butters. Um, what do you think of that idea?
Do we need to wait and make a decision when we get a detailed plan that has the legend in it?
Well, it's going to also be conditioned on review by the highway superintendent, police chief and fire. So, um, because they don't have their curb cut yet. And I did type, talk to Michael about this earlier. And his, um, he said, yes, you can, uh, you can re, no, who did I speak with about this, Jennifer? I spoke with, um, Teresa, Teresa.
Yeah.
Yes, you can review it. Um, and as a, as a driveway special permit, but they are required, we can, we'll make that a condition. And actually Jennifer, Jennifer, you handed me the word, right? Um, where did I put it? I have it here, here it is. So all we need to do, um, with the following conditions, the curb cut will have to be applied for an approved before application for a permit to construct the driveway longer than 500 feet. Okay, so that's one condition we have. Um, and as part of that curb cut, um, I would just add that the police chief, fire chief and, and, um, highway superintendent will have to review this. So why don't we start with that one? That's the easier one. So, um, I make a motion that we have a condition that the curb cut will need to be applied for and approved before application for a permit to construct the driveway longer than 500 feet. And, uh, the police chief, highway superintendent and fire chief will need to approve the curb cut and the driveway.
In writing?
Yes, in writing, thank you. Okay?
Yes, they have to. They have to sign.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Because the fire chief already proved it.
I don't have.
Oh, I think he's only just.
Yeah, I mean, I talked to Hugh, Nancy and Hugh said that he's, you know, probably fine with it.
Oh, okay.
Um, but we have nothing in writing. So we, we need something in writing. So I've just made that condition. Um, do I have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so that's one down. And now, um, in terms of um, working with the abutters. Uh, what?
Mr. Owenhyne also mentioned already that, uh, uh, they were planning to consult with an arborist.
Okay.
And those, 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 those property line trees.
Okay, so, um, we could make a motion that consultation with an arborist will, that information will be shared with the butters?
That was a conservation commission recommendation.
I'm sorry, the public, the public hearing is closed.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Been discussed though.
Yeah. So, um, a motion that there will be consultation with an arborist and, and.
And, and, and that information be shared with, um,
With the butters.
With, with, with butters, yes.
Okay, all right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, all right, I think we're there. We just need to do the findings, um.
Okay, I think, um, they mentioned root pruning too.
I'm sorry?
Root pruning.
Root pruning, um.
Versus, you know, digging and ripping.
Well, wouldn't that be part of working with an arborist?
Yeah.
Well, some, but I, you know.
Go ahead, make a, make a condition.
Why would you just add to your condition just that, um, you know, uh, root pruning, um, be considered
Okay.
as the primary, um, if there's an issue with the roots.
Okay.
Instead of excavating.
Okay, um, Jennifer, is that, do you have that? Okay, do you need us to re?
Part of it.
Do you need us to reword it? You want, do you want us to reword it?
Yeah.
Do it again?
Yeah, just one second.
Gary?
Say it again.
Just, um, so that, um, there was, uh, instead of like, you know, you just go in there with a, you know, an excavator and just.
Root pruning.
Yeah, you would root prune where you, where you needed to. And if it was, you know, concealable, I guess, really.
Got it.
Root pruning would be the preferable choice.
Yeah.
Recommended or whatever.
Okay, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we can do the findings now, um. Um, for granting a special permit for any use requiring such permit under the provisions of this bylaw, the special permit granting authority shall find that the proposed use is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this bylaw and in harmony with its general intent and purpose. Okay with that, is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location, um, will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood, will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety, will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal facility to such an extent that the proposed use or any existing use in the immediate area or in the other area of the town will be unduly subjected to the hazards affecting public health, safety or general welfare. Everybody all right with that? Okay, with that, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
I, I want someone to make that motion. I didn't make it.
Oh, I move we approve.
Okay.
With the conditions.
With the conditions.
We just spoke about.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right? All right, so, let's see, I'll just get organized here.
The driveway.
Thank you. All right. Um. Seventeen.
Yep.
Okay, so next we have a Form A. This is not a special permit, so we do not need to go through that same procedure. And, um, this is a request for, thank you, Jen. Um, for a Form A for one, Larry Wog Road. And, um, this is being presented as, oh, you must be Patrick?
Yeah.
Okay, great. If you can come on up and introduce yourself?
My name is Patrick McHogan. I'm the Lancer Bay Representative, Larry Wong, uh, Van Nominee Trust, John Perron. And the property is located at the intersection of the Interlake and Road and Larry Wong Prosper, just south of the Mass Pike. And basically what they, what is outlined in green. They're all one lot. So they own, everything outlined in green is one lot. It's all one lot. What they're proposing to do is make two lots. And then Lot Two out of that. So it makes this a lot, and this is another lot.
All right.
This would be Lot One, Lot Two.
Got it.
So all, it's, it's in the R2 zone. It has more, every lot has more than enough frontage and area.
So in the R2 zone, uh, they need 250 feet frontage. And, um, they've got that on. Any questions? No, okay, no questions from the board. Jay, Elizabeth, did you have a question?
Ju- just a couple of, uh, good understanding. Jay Bykowsky, my wife Elizabeth Bykowsky, we are abutters for the property. Um, and the question that we have, um, is basically when we talk about the development of two lots, okay? Two building lots, if you will. That's the understanding. Um, we, we will in the future, am I correct, uh, deal with some of the issues of wetlands on this prop, on these properties. Also, there are mature trees on these properties. There's, uh, a concern of access and egress driveways to these properties. And I think what, what, what I'm driving at is ultimately there would be the delineation of specific plans to be shared with the butters, uh, so that everybody in the area would have an understanding of what we're trying to accomplish here.
So this is, um, simply, we are not approving any building lots. Um, even though there's a building shown on the, on the, on the plot, on the plan, we are not approving that. We are simply, um, reviewing the request to divide the property. And we are, basically, this falls under what's known as an approval not required, which is a bit of a misnomer because we have to review it as a. But students first. The plans meet the requirements for frontage and acreage in the R2.
So actually, it's actually just frontage and access.
So there are.
Has nothing to do with it. In public hearing, public hearing or info.
Right.
There. Because it's statutory, either meets it or doesn't.
It's not a public hearing, and I didn't say it was a public hearing, but we, I think we, yeah, we can hear from.
Right.
Yeah. So, um, you know, so this is sort of a clear cut thing. Um, and anything that is done down the road would, in this case, um, you know, if there's wetlands, it would, the concom would be involved. And if there's plans to build, um, in this case, in this location, it would go to the select board. The planning board, um, does the LPOD and then, you know, some other. But this, this type of, this approval would go before the select board, or just the building inspector, actually. Um, because it, it wouldn't need a special permit, so this would just go to the building inspector. So, yeah.
I think the answer to your question is yes.
He would be the ultimate authority.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah.
He's a zoning enforcer.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they have enough, um, they have enough frontage and, uh, then they.
Would need to meet the setback requirements. They have the frontage and, yeah, there's some.
That's difficult, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, you know, so that's, it's fairly straightforward. Okay. So I, I guess, um, I would include the wording in this, um, that I have from downtown council, which is, um, that we I'm not making a motion yet. I'm just, you know, telling you what I'm thinking for wording. Um, that we would approve the plan as an approval under the subdivision control law, um, that does not require, um, is not required. And we could also add, um, endorsement of this plan does not constitute an attestation of compliance either with zoning requirements or with subdivision conditions.
That is already on.
It's already on there? Okay.
On there, we're signing it.
Okay, so we're good?
Absolutely.
All right. All right.
Protection Act zoning, nothing.
Okay, all right, so.
I'm here for Form A.
Form A, okay. So with that, um, if, is, is everybody ready to? Okay, so I make a motion that we approve this as a, an approval under the subdivision control law is, is not required. Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all set.
Kate, the only thing is you have to sign.
Yeah.
And I don't know how many copies you require, but I would only sign as many as you require. So we'll just start shooting them around.
Do you have a mile on here? I have two.
Four on the mile on it. Here's the apple case.
Mile on our pad.
Grassy used to be a day when you had to use a mile on it. Not anymore.
The building inspector?
It revolved one.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's easier to just line them up and.
Line them up out here and do them?
Yeah. And then we'll go around and.
Yeah, but careful.
Train.
We can get them all out here.
So we need four of these, Carl.
We're signing the paper ones, so we're.
This is one.
You're going to sign four makeups out there.
Yeah, but we'll put them all under the.
Oh, no, we'll just flip them over. Keep the mile or separate. These ones here, you just go. Yes, one. Yep, one. Four. But that would change the system.
Over here?
Yep.
But leave this part at the top for the chair.
Yeah, somebody's got to.
Yeah, we'll just wait and do it, um.
Oh, no.
Keep the pen. Anywhere under that.
Kate's doing the four down there, isn't she?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of boards now that have actually put something on file at the registry. Because of COVID, where they only have one person signing.
Yeah.
They have to be here for our vacation in Florida. We're out of luck.
Oh, so you've got three there?
Forget about it.
Yeah.
So we need four, four times.
These are all yours. My life.
Nope, I have a mile on it.
We don't do any.
Do you have the special permit?
My life. Oh, here we go.
You all sign now and we'll be at you.
So we have the Form A.
Oh, so we do need five, it's a good truth.
We have one clock.
Okay, there was a pen up here. There was, it's for the.
There's a pen here. Oh, yeah.
It's all sculpted.
I like the, uh, the pen ones because I just whip right through them. This is where I start thinking about, you know.
I was actually waiting in the other room around the corner.
Oh, you were?
I got here early and I asked for them.
Oh, my.
He sent me to, down there.
Oh, sometimes.
I go, no, sometimes not right.
Yes.
I just came back here. I know I wasn't first. I said, okay, stand a chance.
I love these plans, you know, they're so, the key is there and they're so clear.
Oh, yeah, fun.
It's like night and day from what we get for, you know? Yeah.
Yeah.
It was pressed down hard in this way. Yes, he renewed the permit.
Oh, he did. You're all okay.
I had one more.
Okay.
These are all getting in the way.
That's okay.
From Golding.
Oh, the one in the garage or something or wherever.
One that's up on the hill on the hillside and shows the house. That was permitted a long time ago.
That too.
Yeah, but it only says proposal, I would put it anyway, so it's really nothing. You'd have to go through, you'd have to go through the whole thing again. You still have to make sure it meets the setbacks, this, that and the other thing.
Then they have done that.
Yeah.
What exactly was?
Yeah. We can, uh, thank you.
Yeah.
Because you're going to give your thing. A big problem, they said I had too many closets in my.
But did you?
Okay.
There were no closets when we.
Okay, I don't keep a sign. Just said it straight up because.
Now I have a whole hall.
Oh, it doesn't.
No.
We have more.
That's okay.
We're good. We edit to the end.
Very small.
They were all like really shallow.
I was not a small person.
I don't know, really. He just wants to be able to separate the two because he's not going to want that to go with that. He's actually, will he do it here or not? He doesn't know. The only one that I need back though is this one. You can have all of them. You can have your pen.
Yeah, just you. Oh, no.
Nice plan. You got it?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Hey Jay, did you want to?
How many of us left?
Pat, you're all set?
Been doing it thirty-eight years.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, sorry you were routed to. Okay, Jay, did you?
I just wanted to take a quick minute to cite the planning committee to get a thorough assessment and overview to these plans. This one, the preceding plan, thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome, Jay.
Very welcome, thank you.
Appreciate it as residence.
We were impressed.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining.
Yeah, thank you. It's great.
Now I will let you deal with your, your structural.
Your structural issues.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much, yeah. Take care.
Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Oh, God.
Yeah, you too, you too.
It's been great to be here.
Drink out the water. Enjoy all those good things. Okay, so now, good night. We get to reconstitute the board and, um, let's see, so what we're going to be electing and appointing our Chair, Vice Chair and Clerk. And then we'll appoint a rep to, representative to the Community Preservation Committee and a delegate to Berkshire Regional Planning Commission and a housing rep to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. Did I get that right? Yeah. Okay.
And somebody to CPC.
Yes.
Oh, did you say that?
First, yeah, yeah, so.
Duff.
Yeah.
And blind.
All right, so why don't we start with Chair? And.
Well, I don't know. I mean, uh, I'm not sure if anyone else has been, uh, has, has, has ambitions here, but, uh, if, um, you know, uh, I, I feel like Kate's been doing a terrific job and has been organized and, and, and running efficient meetings, which is something I always appreciate. Um, so I would nominate her to, um, continue as the Chair if she's well.
Thank you, Carl.
Yep. Do we need a second?
I'll second.
Well, do you want to talk about it at all? I mean.
Well, are you willing? I guess that's the question.
That's the question.
Oh, yes. That's a very important part of the discussion, isn't it?
I'd like to do it for another year. I enjoy doing it, you know?
Good.
Another year, one more year.
Does anybody else want to, I guess, is another question.
Well, if it's just one more year, then we better start thinking.
Yeah.
So, did we have a second?
Second, I second.
Liz second.
Somebody second.
All in favor?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, we have Vice Chair, and I would like to nominate Gary as Vice Chair. He's just been so helpful in terms of, um, you know, running questions off of him and he was Chair for many years and he was a wonderful Chair, so it's been incredibly helpful having him.
On your.
To, uh.
Your resume.
Yeah.
So I nominate Gary.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Wayne is interested in being Clerk, so I would like to nominate.
In absentia? Are we sure that he really is interested?
I called him. He's stuck on a job someplace in North County and I said, you know, would you like to continue as Clerk? And he said if the board would like him to.
Yes.
So I.
Are you nominating him?
I'm nominating Wayne as Clerk.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, um, Nancy, would you like to continue as delegate for Berkshire Regional Planning Commission? Please say yes.
My husband says no, I say yes.
Great. So I nominate Nancy as.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Housing Rep. Um, I'd like to nominate Liz. She's got, been on, been doing it and she's got the knowledge there and, um, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Will, will you do it, Liz?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that just leaves CPC and I don't, who's been doing it?
Me, I was this year.
You were this year? You were this year? Okay. Do you want to continue or?
Unless.
I don't know. I mean, how onerous are the responsibilities?
Not too terrible. It's, it's, we got a lot.
It's a short window.
It's a short window, but we had 20 or so.
And Gary, you do it for assessors, right? Yeah.
And I enjoy it.
Yeah. Okay. I nominate Liz.
Second. All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are all set. And I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.